Good evening, everyone. We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call. Sarah?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
John?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Nathan here. Doug is excused from the evening. I have two pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item four, public input. This is the time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Okay. Item five A, discussion of possible action in reference to approval of urban renewal report.
This is one of the many reports that we have to do throughout the year. This is concerning our TIP obligations. I've went through this one. It's just a few pages that I'm showing you. We did go down in our rebates because we did drop off, obviously, the Brothers Market for next year. However, we have refinanced our loans, so it does look like we're doing... It looks as if we're kind of going up just because we did allocate more money for the sports complex deal bond. So, and we're starting to make those payments now, obviously, this next year, so.
Okay.
All's complete. Maggie's happy with Sphere Financial with it, so I would entertain a motion if you guys like it.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the urban renewal report. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five B, discussion of possible actions for approving TIP certification to the county.
So this was actually completed by Maggie with Sphere Financial. This is just our obligations that this is the money that we ask from the county out of the TIP revenue to pay for those that we have set aside, and said, "This is what we're using that TIP money for."
Do I have a motion to approve the TIP certification?
So...
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those... Second probably saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item five C, discussion of possible action in reference to payment to Kerr Van Enterprises LLC for $33,999.
So you'll find in your packet the email from Mark Culver from EC cog. This is in reference to the housing grant 606 South Washington Street. This will be the final payment for $33,999.
This isn't one of the programs where we pay half of it. This is the...
This is the...
This is the whole?
It'll... There'll be refunds that we recoup back from, you know, whatever percentage that is.
Okay.
But this is what... This is what we would pay. You know, they had to come up with their match, and then we have ours.
Okay, so this is like a 50/50 or?
No, not a 50/50.
I'll submit this paperwork for reimbursement through the program afterwards.
Okay. Did you have any questions about this, Mike?
No.
Okay. All right. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, second probably saying aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay. Six A, third and final reading ordinance 06-2022, update to chapter 161, rental inspections.
So this is the, obviously, the third and final reading. What you guys approved at the last two meetings. I have not heard anything. Again, this was just taking our ordinance that we currently had and then mirroring it to the 2080. So it's all consistent with each other. Okay?
Do I have a motion to approve the third and final reading?
Motion to approve the third and final reading of rental inspections.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We'll do a roll call for this. Sarah?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Everyone says aye. All right, so moving on to six B, resolution 30-2022 for approval of housing inspection fees.
So this is, um, this is the fees that we kind of talked about with this 2080. We can kind of go through all this a little bit if you'd like. What's that?
Yeah.
Okay. So essentially, Lynn County is going to charge the majority of this, and what we've done in the past is Public Health has done it. So like, for instance, the initial fee, we've added $10 to each of those fees just so that it gives us $10 of our for our time, our administrative fees, paperwork, copying, all that kind of stuff. So the only difference that you're going to see with this is two things. One is going to be the annual fee. We've never had that before. So when somebody, let's say if you owned a house and you were going to rent it out, you would come down here and you'd register it with the city. And basically forevermore, you'd be registered with the city and never pay a fee, never do anything else. Well, what's happened with that is some of this stuff gets lost in the tracks. Let's say if you sell that property, we never know. We don't know who the new owners are. So what the annual fee does is it helps keep, it's basically for our expense in keeping this working document, our communication with the county, we keep track of the dates, we keep on top of it. Actually, they do and give us the documents back. So the other thing with that is, like I said, with the... It just helps keep our up to date. Everybody's on top. There's nobody... Let's say, like, right now, we have some people that have gotten two inspections potentially, and we may have somebody that's gotten none just because of they've switched owners and Public Health hasn't been able to track down. That is why doing this 2080 is so important, that Lynn County Building has this own person that stays on top and that they're dedicated to this, which is kind of the whole reason why we went this route. Now, the other benefit, I guess, and the other change is for the inspection fee, if you go down there, it's going to be every two years, and it's going to be 75 bucks straight across the board. What's currently happening is Public Health is charging an hourly wage. I believe it was 56, Christina, and now it's going to $62 an hour. And usually, it takes one and a half to three hours. So, and that's going to be every two years. So it could take them all day now. It's only going to be a $75 flat fee. So I think in the whole scheme of things, it should become pretty close to a wash when you take the annual fee with the less money that they're paying for the inspection. But everything else is just straight across the board. They... The county's going to be billing us, and then we bill residents. Similar to what we're doing right now.
You say the annual fee comes to the city or goes to the county?
So the annual fee will be directly to us.
Any other questions?
And everything else is for us, other than, so the... We didn't add $10 to the second inspection, the third inspection, the fourth inspection. We didn't add it to the no-show fees because we don't have any part of that. So it's only the things like the... You can see where the odd numbers are. $110 lease and found a permit is because we're going to have to be involved with that, so there's $10 for us. Re-insatement fee is $10 for us. And then down bottom, the vacant neglected building registration, there's $10 billed in for us. And the appeal process is $10 because we'll have to be involved with that. Everything else is money in and money out.
What's a vacant neglected building registration?
So if they want to just have the building and not rent... They own the building and they're going to leave it vacant.
But they're not renting it?
Correct.
Why do they pay a fee?
I can talk to Luke about this, but it's my assumption that they're paying this fee so that they can inspect and determine that that's not, that's going on instead of somebody saying, "Oh, hey, I'm not renting it out." And then you rent it out on the backside. You know, not let the city, you know, you say you're not renting it out, but then attorney do.
Also, in the past, we've had trouble. You get a building that's not being rented, not being used. We don't know what's going on there. We don't know what kind of fire hazards are being created by what their hobby is or whatever they're doing. In downtown, where one building's right up against...
That's the other thing is I need to talk to Luke with. I would like to get all of those folks like Mike just talked about before, with those downtown buildings that they are going to keep them vacant and they're not doing anything in there. That might be a way where we can have those buildings inspected. But I don't know if they're going to qualify.
Okay.
Mike, you're thinking, want to make sure they qualify. I mean, I don't... Why wouldn't they qualify for an inspection?
Except they're not being rented out.
They've never been rented out or...
They're sitting there with equipment or crap in them. I think we want to do everything we can to expedite that they can't rent it out. I mean, I can't fathom anybody doing that.
Well, I...
But we've got several.
This was brought up before. It's such a fine line, and I brought it up to the attorney, and we can't make anybody do anything with their property downtown, other than make sure that it's not a nuisance.
Correct.
But having it empty, no matter what they have inside, by our definition of a nuisance, doesn't qualify.
Yeah, I think that's wrong. One of we got a building half full of sawdust. And the other one that I can immediately think of is just, is jammed full of tables, chairs, full restaurant gear. You know, as long as you've got power on to those, that you can go throw a switch. It's a potential hazard to me.
Yeah, I don't know. Attorney says it's such a fine line. I mean, because I'm sure there's other residents in town that is packed full of clothes or anything else to...
I mean, I haven't been to some people's houses.
The whole upstairs. You know what I'm saying? Such a fine line. But I'm going to, I'm going to try to work with them, and if there's a way that we can get to downtown, if they're vacant buildings that are not occupied by the resident, I'm going to try to get this into here so then potentially they can fall into this, if you guys want. I was just going to explore that option to see if that's something where we want to do.
I'd like to go back to commercial buildings having a fire inspection periodically. Like, we did have, and we had a fire inspector, and that person retired, but like, we haven't found it though.
Well, I think some of the issues was, and correct me if I'm... I was just involved on the fireside, but there were some issues that needed fixed. And council decided to either waive those or not, not follow through with those. And I think that was the bigger reason. Because, I mean, I was involved on the fireside. So that's going to be the thing. If you're going to have these buildings, commercial buildings fire inspected, then I would assume we would need to follow through with that recommendation.
I recall, I recall us doing one in the past few years, and the finding was, would have created a hardship for the business. Right? The business existing, there was no present danger regardless of what the code might say it should be for a new building. The old building was considered grandfathered into... Yeah, grandfathered into whatever it was at the time that it was established. So I...
And I don't disagree with that mindset, but I think that was where the, I believe, don't quote me, but I think that's where the
Disconnect.
Disconnect, you know, where, I don't know if that person didn't believe that or not, but that's the way I understood it from the fire chief's head. I think it's...
We don't want to lose Main Street because we're not inspecting a building.
No, I totally get that.
You know, I mean, I don't, and a vacant building can, something will change in there with the wiring, et cetera.
Is that in his own rental, like, he keeps his own stuff in there or has he rented that?
Or that somebody's storing downtown?
I didn't hear who you said. She asked if it was their stuff or somebody else's. I believe it's theirs, the owner's, right?
The owner of the building that you're referring to that it has a bunch of stuff in it? Is it his stuff or has he rented it?
I think it's his stuff. Well, I don't know on that back part. I mean, all, when you look in the front of the former restaurant, you see tables and chairs and stuff. But that building goes on back, so I don't know what's in the back of that.
Kitchen.
I think there's a house or apartment.
Kitchen. Well, they were living there at one point.
Yeah.
No, it's not upstairs on that one. But it's one thing to have a standalone building, and if that catches fire, it's... That person's lost. But on Main Street, where you have common walls, it can spread on down the block and, like you say, take out that whole side of the block.
Well, I will work with Lynn County, and I'll come back to something on that fire inspection.
So is this for businesses too or just housing?
This thing?
Yeah.
This is housing.
So like, if I...
The pricing schedule's got business.
Yeah.
No, that's nothing.
Not on our business.
Business permit initially.
Well, that's...
That's the business of being a landlord.
That's a business's own.
If I went out and bought a fourplex and rented it out, and then 30 days later, somebody moved out, I'd have to get inspected again?
No, no.
It's every two years.
So your schedule, your apartment, regardless of its... How many people you have in there is every two years. And then you'll pay, so let's say if you bought this, you would come down and you would pay the initial permit fee, $50, and then if you look down here, it would be an additional 15 per unit. So you'd have 50 plus 15, 15 and 15. And then you would pay $75 per unit, and then if you have a fourplex, you're going to pay $10 for each additional. And then you'd just pay your annual fee, which is 50 plus 15. But then you'd be inspected every two years.
So is the trailer part available or not?
That's what we're working with now. Some of them are, I know three for sure that are owned properties. But we're working with Luke right now to get them into the loop. Because I believe everything else is leased, as far as I know, and that would qualify.
So they still have rental out there?
I think if it's under contract and it's, unless they have family renting to own it, then I think that's still rental property until you own it.
It says basically what it was. It's a rental, called rental.
Yeah.
They got around things.
Unless you guys have a direction on, other than that, that's... I'm just trying to be fair and consistent across the board so everybody's on the same page.
All right. Well, we have a resolution to approve the...
And we did send out letters to everybody about this new change with the new ordinance, new information, telling them the new inspector was going to be coming out. We referred them to the city website, which has all this information on to the website.
Okay.
And nobody's protested?
No.
I've had a couple of questions, but nothing, not a protest, just a... I've had two people there all get questioned, just clarifying what they needed to do, if they get re-inspected. That's one thing that's important in this. Anybody, they're just taking over where they left, where Public Health left off. So it's not like, well, jeez, I just got inspected in March by Public Health, and here I am doing it again. No, you're staying on your same cycle. So if you were just inspected in March by Public Health, you won't be done till March of '24.
Do you have a motion to approve?
All right. Thank you, Rick. I have a motion to approve the housing inspection fees list. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Sarah?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I say aye. All right, moving on to six C, resolution 31-2022 for approval of American Rescue Fund's expenditure transfer.
So this is, if you recall, this is some of the money that we're using for the sports complex for the sewer water, storm sewer work. We passed the resolution and referenced that. This is just a transfer of funds to that.
Okay.
This is from, whoop, sorry. This is the American Rescue Funds that were given to us from the county.
You said six E?
This is six C.
C, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. This is six C. I will make a motion to approve the transfer of funds. Do I have a second?
Aye.
I have a motion and a second. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I say aye. Six E, resolution 32-2022 for approval of street lighting.
Yep, this will be a resolution for the final addition of Martha Street. This will be the, or I'm sorry, the Novak addition. This will be on Martha Street at the end, so we're going to put in three more lights. And Alliant needs this approval in order to do that. Talked to, actually, Wayne Novak's the one who initiated this, so he wanted to get them in, and they needed this resolution in order to move forward. And you see, the only difference is from the last one is the, the lights are a little less wattage from the previous one.
Same height?
Yeah. The block, if you find your glass.
Do you have a motion?
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, second probably saying aye?
Aye.
Any ayes?
Resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, roll call. You got any?
Oh, I'm sorry, resolution, you're right. Roll call. Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
And I say aye. All right. Six E, resolution 33-2022 for approval of library board and fire department members.
John, do you have anything on this individual on the library board other than what's here?
Oh, he said at the last meeting. I think we're lucky to have him.
He's replacing Mary Ann.
And then for fire department, this will be for medical only. Megan Snyder lives over in, I believe, it's Grand Avenue Circle. She is a RN via hospital. She, when she started her RN, she did take the M T basic course, but then when she went into RN, she, she let it lapse because she didn't need that anymore. So she can run on our service as a RN, which would be essentially at the paramedic level once she gets the appropriate training. So this was presented at the fire meeting last week, and they voted to put her on.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve both members, fire and library board.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I say aye. Okay. Item seven, correspondences. Anything?
I don't have anything tonight.
Nothing? All right. Moving on to eight A, city engineers report.
So Dave's got, we're working on the water main project. With that being said, we tried, the whole purpose of this process is to get all the water main and green space too, so we don't have to do any damage to the streets if we need to repair anything. With that being said, that was going to impact almost 200 trees. And with the duration just happening, I think it would be a huge hit to the community to get rid of trees. We've walked through the area. There's a lot of trees that are still good and healthy trees. So we've moved some stuff around to where we've got it narrowed down to 50 possible trees that might have to come down. I got Brandon and I are going to walk them before we bring it to us, but that's our big hiccup now is the placement. Because I think, personally, I don't want to be the one responsible for taking down that many trees if we don't have to. So that's, that's where we're at with that.
Seems like a lot excessive amount, you know? We can figure out another way to do it.
So the goal of it was you put the water line outside of the street so you don't tear up the street every time you have a water main break. Well, outside of the street, streets, so you kind of got to figure out what we...
And it's less intrusive too, because you're not tearing up the street to lay the new water main in somehow. So that's, that's just where we're at with it. They just want to give you guys a heads up and make sure you know what's kind of slowing the environmental impact down that.
Okay. Eight B, public works director report.
Spiral screen's supposed to be get put in this week finally, so that's only been five years coming. With that, the guys are doing leaves the best they can. I remind people, we have one truck, one sucker. When you figure you're going from the sidewalk to the curb, there's a lot of places that that's a, you know, a 20-foot chunk that we're trying to swipe and clean. So it's not as, not as fast and easy as people would like to see. So we're, we're trying. We've got maps showing where we've been and when we've been there. And we're hoping by the end of this week, we can be through for the final time through every area.
All right, thank you. Eight C, parks and rec director report.
We started games for girls' basketball on Saturday. Everything's gone great up to this point. I will start registrations for boys' basketball at the end of the month. Continuing to work on the Destination Iowa grants. We have a meeting on that tomorrow. Got some members from the Historic Preservation Committee to help out with that now that we're focusing on the barns, so that's exciting. We're planning a Christmas movie in the library, up top in the library. We're unsure of the date at this time, but I will announce that at the next council meeting. We'll have that set in stone. And then other than that, I think that's about all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Eight D, police department report.
This has been, their graduation is Friday, so we're wrapping up the fifth grade program there. We can finish it up there. We could have a little celebration on Friday, so it's all good.
All right. Thank you, sir. Eight E, ambulance director report.
I don't have any from fire today.
All right. Moving on, eight F, fire chief slash city administrators report.
Don't have anything fire department related, other than what you've already approved. City admin report, been meeting with David Schmidt and YTT at the sports complex. There's a little bit of dirt work they're going to continue with before the end of the construction season. With that, we are going to be putting up the concrete blocks across Third Avenue and Jefferson Street and probably Walnut. Somebody decided they're going to take a joyride out through there, so I just asked the people, you know, there's a lot of money being spent, a lot of hard work going into that. Please be respectful. There's sidewalks you can walk through, walk along there. If you want to go out and see, you don't need to drive through it. With that, though, the draft seems to be coming nice. We had that little bit of Indian summer that finally got to sprout on the soccer field. I was a little worried, but it seems to be coming now, so. Also been working on the budget for next year, just getting some general ideas put together. I'll have to be meeting with Travis soon in the union to go over negotiations, because that's going to be coming up July 1 for the new contract. So we'll be meeting with that. This Thursday, I'm headed to, reporting to the budget workshop. Also been working with Travis to, I'd like to get, we've got some plans for a pavilion out at the sports complex with kind of a maintenance shed, a storage area. I'd like to see go in there. So hopefully, in the next few meetings, we'll iron that out and bring that to you. If you have any suggestions or ideas in the meantime, please feel free to reach out to me so we can improve that.
Will they include bathrooms?
Yes.
Awesome.
So that's kind of the, it'd be very similar to the park pavilion, except on the one end, it'd be closed, and it'll have a maintenance shop, like a maintenance shed to put different things in, so.
I thought the pump house, which wouldn't be too far away, but also have...
That's, that's going to be pretty small. The whole idea was, in the interim, until we got everything, we're going to utilize that, and then that's going to be the water main repair equipment storage area. So that's kind of temporary until we got everything going, or we had overflow, until we got everything we needed out there at the park, but... Very undercover Destination Iowa, been helping him with that. Also been trying to address some of the ongoing long-term nuisances that we've had in town. It's a little bit challenging, but I think we're making progress, and people have been pretty good and supportive of helping get their areas cleaned up, so. of helping get their areas cleaned up, so ways to go, but, um, I'm working at it. And then the PIO class that was scheduled for the eighth and ninth, um, didn't happen due to a, uh, instructor, I don't know if they're ill or what the deal was with it, but, uh, didn't, couldn't come. So that's been moved to the twenty-ninth, I believe, of November, so I'm gonna try to make the work to go there. And I'll take any questions or concerns if you have them.
We have some people that have built like garages and haven't done the cement, that I know. Garage was built a couple of years ago, um, for sure.
Like the driveway sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, several, are they being contacted on a regular basis, or are they just totally not redoing it? Or there's one on Main Street, there's one.
Um, yeah, I, most of these, I think actually all of them are prior to, to me, and I know the inspection process has changed a little bit. So I've, I've tried to reach out to these people and explain it to them, I know that there's one on the north end of town that's actually either for, or is going to be born here shortly. I know the one you're referring to, I think there was a little litigation with that, so I need to go dig through that to see how that ended, but, yeah, I can reach out to those that.
How you, how you see them around, and if you lose that?
Yeah, 'cause that's, it's not fair, and that's, that's one thing I've tried to do with everything, is just be consistent, and, and that's one thing that, you know, um, I know there's a lot of talk about the house down the street here, but, you know, he is compliant with his driveway now. There's concrete from the door to the street, uh, I don't think he's done yet, but at least as far as complying, if that goes as a driveway, it's, it's been done, so. Yeah, I can, I can check into them if you have some that I haven't seen, I know of three that I'm aware of, if there's others.
Sure, we're talking about the same three.
Yeah, if there's others, let me know, but.
But, and I, the one, I know specifically, a past council wouldn't allow the, the front doors to be used. Well, now that's, over a period of time, he's going in and out of there.
Yeah.
Frequently, so he's not, he won't, you know? And unfortunately, it's on Main Street.
Right. I'm pretty sure I know that one, I'll, I mean, that's one I'm gonna have to dig through and figure out how that was left.
As far as I know, it was left that he had to get it down. But I'm not positive enough.
All right. No other questions, we'll move on to eight G, council and mayor reports. Sarah?
Um, I don't have much, um, Halloween Town, I think, was very well, so that was a great success, so. Did we talk about that last week? Did we talk about that? No, it would've been, yeah, I didn't think so. So, yeah, good job, Drayton, and everyone who helped out with Halloween Town. Um, good luck to the city crew tomorrow as we get our first parcels though. Um, drive careful out there, and that's about all I have. Thank you, Andrew V for being here tonight.
Sure.
Yeah. We always like, we always like to have visitors.
Well, I'm sorry that I didn't take the opportunity, I didn't have business, but I'm Andrew V.
No, yeah, easy Andrew V.
All right, thank you, Sarah. John?
Thanks to everyone involved with Halloween Town, I heard nothing but great things about it, so I think that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Rick?
No.
Okay, Mike, you got any other thing? Okay, um, my turn, I, I just wanna thank the city crew for getting out, getting leaves. My front drive and street looks great, so thanks for that. Um, and yeah, Halloween Town, I also only heard good things, so, nice job, once again. That's all I got. Um, all right, we'll move on to new business, nine A, possible closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one point five J to discuss possible sale of real property. So.
Um, Bart Collins is on there, so we'll just have to get a motion to go.
Okay.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
I have a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
I have a second, um, Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Nathan says aye.
So add him.